Would you like me to go ahead?
Okay, yeah, well, it's 1:30. We'll call this Budget Committee of the whole meeting in order. And first, I have to read some announcements. It's a public notice, "Due to the efforts to contain the spread of COVID-19 and to protect all individuals, city facilities will not be open to the public to attend council and committee meetings until further notice." "The public may submit written correspondence regarding agenda matters by email to the clerks@richmondhill.ca." "And written correspondence must be posted by 12:00 p.m. the day before the meeting." "Committed will be provided to all members of council to ensure that public information is noted in the public record." Is that my computer that's giving that feedback?
Uh, no, that's very...
Okay. Okay, "The Office of the Clerk will provide instructions on appearing as an electronic delegation." So, we, to start the meeting, we need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Trying to see everyone. Okay, Mayor Barrow. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? That carries. Are there any members of committee that have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? Okay. I don't, don't believe we have any delegations, so we'll move to the scheduled business. Item 4.1 is the draft capital budget for 2021, and we have a presentation from Paolo Massaro. Go ahead, Paolo.
Good. I'll just wait for the clerk to put the presentation up.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good day, everyone. This is the first capital budget that's been presented since the organizational changes took place recently. And I want to start by extending my sincerest gratitude to my predecessor, the former commissioner, for leaving the budget process in a solid state. It's made adapting to these financially challenging periods much more manageable. As mentioned, this is the second year that the budget represents a transition taken into account sustainability and financial planning with a capped tax-supported cutoff. I also want to recognize my staff and my financial management advisor and all their countless hours spent over the last several months working towards making the necessary adjustments to meet the goal set by council. I'm just the spokesperson here summarizing a lot of their collaborative work on their part bringing this budget document together. Next slide. Looking at the agenda for this afternoon, I'm going to provide a quick overview of our capital investments, which is basically everything that we own, estimated at $2 billion. A review of how we identify capital projects, the strategy and process to develop the budget, and a summary of the proposed 2021 draft capital budget. And that'll include some of the significant projects over $1 million, some of the significant changes in deferrals as a result of those changes, after which I'll hand it back over to Treasurer David Dexter, who's going to talk about how we go about funding all the projects that we've identified. Next slide. So let's begin with a summary of what the city owns. While I recognize that for staff and current council, this isn't new, however, for the benefit of our audience at large who might be joining us today, it's important to express and reiterate the magnitude of what the city owns and therefore needs to maintain. There's over 5,600 municipalities in all of Canada, Richmond-Hill being one of them, and we're over, we're one of over 440 in Ontario. In the last 20 years, Richmond-Hill's population has more than tripled to approximately 210,000, and it's ranked 28th most populous community in Canada. So why is this important? With our growing populations comes more infrastructure and assets that we need to support this population. So the biggest volume and value of these assets falls into the first two categories on the slide you see before you, being facilities followed by linear infrastructure and a collection of others that I'll get to shortly. So we're seeing a time now where many of our infrastructure assets, especially those in facilities, that have been mostly built in the 2000s are coming of age and will reach their peak lifecycle renewal within the next 10 years. And that will require them to have significant intervention to maintain a state of good repair. To quickly summarize, we have over 60 facilities that includes the items described here within our community centers, pools, ice pads, libraries, fire halls, et cetera. In all these facilities, there's over 5,000 major building components like mechanical, electrical systems, roofing, building structures, and this is evident in requests in the current draft before you today. In the last column, or sorry, in the next column, we have our linear assets that provide critical community connectivity and the things that we take for granted. Like when we turn the tap on, we have potable water that we can drink, and when we flush, everything disappears. So this is thousands of kilometers in sewers and water main on about 600 kilometers of road, along with our sidewalks and trails, 80 ponds, over 16,000 streetlights. In the last bucket, some of our other assets include our parks and their amenities covering 800 acres. The trees as part of our urban forestry canopy are also considered assets. Our fleet of equipment, as well as all the IT infrastructure that keeps us all connected in our digital world, especially now during COVID, and represented in the budget before you again. So it's important at this point to reflect on this growing $2 billion inventory worth of assets that were all collectively responsible for, responsible for, staff and council. Next slide. Capital plan. It starts with the strategic vision for Richmond-Hill, where people come together to build our community, which is born out by the strategic plan that is action-oriented and sets specific tactics and activities to be undertaken to achieve that vision. So factors like state of good repair, growth, and legislative requirements all feed into how the capital plan is prioritized. Next slide. Here are the primary categories to describe how we identify our capital infrastructure programs and projects. In the first column, we have state of good repair, which is basically another way of saying asset management. We use condition assessments to evaluate our assets and create programs to maintain them that populates and develops the 10-year forecast. As well, we have departmental plans for ongoing maintenance and repair replacements, like our stormwater rehab program, the pavement management program, or a bridging culvert rehab program. In the second column or bucket, we have growth projects defined through master planning. So while the state of good repair pertains to the things that we already own and need to maintain, growth projects are the elements that we need to build for the future. All these things that we build through the development and intensification process get added to that long list of assets. And at some point, that $2 billion I referenced earlier continues to grow as well. So it's important again to emphasize then that all these plans are linked back to the OP and the city strat plan, and that's our guiding document and roadmap to success. In the last couple of buckets, we have regulatory and legislative influence that identify projects, whether it's AODA that continues to drive how we deliver some of our projects, as well as mandatory bridging culvert inspections that are required every two years. The output of that updates our 10-year forecast as well. Some of the other influences that we're aware of is working with our neighboring municipalities or higher-tier levels of government, such as York Region's capital plan coordinating with them, or provincial projects like the BRT in the subway. Our capital plan aligns with the work being undertaken by the region where the city owns infrastructure, such as sidewalks and streetlights, or, as we've seen recently, where municipal infrastructure, such as sanitary sewers or water mains, needed to, need to be constructed on their roads. One of these examples is the 2021 water main replacement on Major Mackenzie Drive in front of the hospital. That project will ensure system reliability in higher-risk areas. Projects can also be advanced as a result of community interest or through council direction as well. Next slide. Okay, so now that we know where all our projects and needs come from, we need a system to filter them through and make sure we're all doing the right work at the right time. So we toss them into that big harper that you see in the screen, and we call that corporate asset management. It's a big filter, and it's the strategy that allows us to determine what will make it into subsequent years' budgets and forecasts. As a reminder, this budget year is the second in a row where the city's attempted to take a financially responsible approach to manage critical infrastructure needs as we move forward with sustainability as a short-term measure. However, not necessarily sustainable in the long term. Next slide. This is a representation of our process that visually demonstrates the capital investment process. Starts with the planning phase, flows into delivery, and ends in the green section with maintenance and operation of those assets. The delivery of any project can depend on its complexity, size, and the staff resources that we have. When a project is adopted through council's endorsement of the yearly capital plan, it'll typically be completed in two years for straightforward projects, for example, water wastewater replacements. First year is dedicated to the necessary background work, detailed design. Second year is devoted towards tender preparation, award followed by construction. However, if there's studies, EAs, or higher-tier regulatory approvals, property acquisition, and other things that are required, the timeline can be extended for several years. Next slide. So here's some examples of the capital investments that cities made recently that are completed or still in progress. Here we have the David Dunlop Observatory, a state of good repair project at $5.7 million for the administration building and the observatory itself, and Flood Farms that park, a growth-related project stemming through development, construction cost $800,000. Next slide. Here we have Phyllis Rollison Bridge. It was a replacement, therefore a state of good repair project, construction $105,000. On the right, we have the Lake-to-Lake Path Intersection Improvements, a growth project, an example of partnering with York Region for their works and the timing of when we do and undertake our projects, as well as for funding. The construction for this project, the city's portion, $1.15 million. Next slide. Recently opened at Sackfield Twinning and David Hamilton Park, a combination of state of good repair, where we rehabilitated an existing ice pad, as well as growth. We built a new ice pad and master planned for the entire park within the facility, and that came in under budget at $28 million. Lastly, here's an example of where a facility had reached the end of its life, and it was no longer functioning as intended. This is just outside our building here. This is intended to demonstrate the importance of maintaining our infrastructure in a state of good repair. It's clearly a pond, but if you drove by it before, you'd hardly tell that it was one. So without timely interventions, the risk of flooding and potential reputational risk increases. It's a great example of why maintaining our infrastructure is so important. The value of this project, $3.5 million. Next slide. Moving on to our 2021 capital budget strategy. On June 23rd, the Budget Committee of the whole staff were given direction to develop a budget that would manage our capital program reflective of our priorities, to try and maximize funding from external sources, and also consider using alternative sources available for funding these projects. And lastly, the most important, that the tax-supported capital program would be capped at $15 million. Next slide. A little bit about the capital budget process. It's evolving and modernizing, and it now includes a scoring and ranking system to help prioritize projects across all departments on the basis of benefit and risk of deferral, which basically means, what is the risk if we do not deliver these projects? This is the second year where each project was assessed on several criteria, including health, safety, environmental, regulatory, reputational, and operational risks. The output of all of this work is what you see before you in the draft 2021 capital budget. This is what historically has been undertaken across all organizations prior to corporate asset management strategies existed or legislated, with varying levels of sophistication. The primary difference is that previously, each department representing an asset class would bring all their requests forward, independent of each other, to be debated at local councils. Whereas now, corporate asset management were able to do a lot of this vetting in advance prior to coming to council. So as an example, a request for a water main will be ranked and prioritized together against a roof replacement, a park or a library request, because all departments are competing for the same dollars. This is how the asset management strategy will modernize and inform future budget submissions to ensure that we are sustainable for the future. I'm very proud and pleased to say that the asset management plan is on track, and the city has met all of its previously mandated provincial requirements, as well as the target for the July 2021 deadline to inform, again, future capital budgets as it relates to funding requirements for growth renewal and the replacement of all our assets. Next slide. This is a great slide. Goes into a little bit more depth of some of the things that I've been articulating. So about our decision-making process, and it takes into consideration lifespans of an asset. So have a look at that red dot on the screen as an example of the estimated service life of an asset. Imagine it's a bridge, a roof, a fire truck, or even your home, perhaps. The graph demonstrates how we can extend the estimated service life of an asset with interventions at key trigger points. Interventions meaning spending money on upkeep at the right times. So as the saying goes, "A stitch in time can save night," and that's very much the way we should be treating all of our municipal infrastructure and assets. If a condition falls below that into the orange and red, there may be public safety concerns or even potential failure of that asset. You can look at a road as an example. When a road is brand-new, we're going to start off by doing pothole repairs or cracked ceiling, and then maybe after 10 or 15 years, a resurfacing, and we'll continue to evaluate. And as that road falls into that lower levels, we may have to at some point do another trigger, which may be a full reconstruction. And then the condition that asset comes back into the top dark green section. So it's a key principle in managing all of our $2 billion worth of inventory, and needs to be remembered when future budgets and forecasts come before you. Assets can be run to their point of obsolescence with no interventions, which result in shorter lifespans of those assets, or we can perform this maintenance to extend the life, which is financially, which is financially sustainable approach for our future generations. The risk to consider by deferring critical infrastructure, we could fall out of regulatory compliance. There's reputational risk. It could be catastrophic failure of an asset. And the short, short story here is that it's definitely going to cost us more in the long run. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's where all that process and hard work gets summarized. I'm proud to announce that the budget before you has met the criteria in order to meet the $15 million tax-supported cap set by council at the June 23rd BCW. By applying risk assessment approach discussed earlier, we're able to meet and actually fall just below the target at $14,968,000 from the original $21 million. This does, however, present a backlog for a second year in a row and pushes some projects out beyond their originally intended year of delivery. While this is a short-term measure and not necessarily sustainable over the long term, we are working on solutions through the Sustainability Committee and a robust corporate asset management system that will ensure fiscal prudence for all capital expenditures while instilling public confidence in all the work that we do. Next slide. This slide shows a list of some of the deferred or changed projects. Some of the major projects, Bethesda Side Road. We're undertaking some utility relocations prior to construction, various intersection improvements in the Bayview-Briggs Valley Mead area, and some sidewalk and trails, various locations. And as well, you'll notice that the mirror has, is the top of the list with a value of almost $6.5 million. There is a report on today's agenda, and if there's any questions related to that report, staff will be more than happy to answer any questions after completion of this presentation. Next slide. Here we have a list of some of the significant projects over $1 million. Major Mackenzie Water Main, Algonis Community Center, some fleet replacement, but you'll also notice that there are a lot of facility-type projects that's consistent with the point that I made earlier regarding all the facilities coming of age as a result of their construction happening primarily in the 2000s. In early 90s. Next slide. Similarly, a lot of our projects for next year are to be funded by federal gas tax, and we have a short list of them here, and they are significant in value and predominantly resides within our facilities asset category. Next slide. Here we have our shovel-ready list. Our shovel-ready list is something that we've been managing for a handful of years, and to support this work that we've been doing, and a reference to Premier of Ontario who recently indicated that we're making it possible for communities to have shovel-ready projects ready, and they will include long-term care, education, more importantly, municipal infrastructure projects as well. These are the investments that the province feels that will protect the health and well-being of Ontarians and build for our future. List here are the projects added to the existing list that we already have of shovel-ready projects that can be found in Appendix A of the report, and that list is growing at a value of $29 million. We're hoping that this will translate into grants at some point in the future. In the event that they're not, they'll still be programmed into the next 10-year forecast as part of their originally intended year of delivery. So in closing, I want to reiterate the importance of understanding the role infrastructure plays in our daily lives and the need to support it and the future budgets in order to maintain our inventory in a good state of repair for future generation of all Richmond-Hill residents. The federal government has also said that infrastructure is the foundation that supports communities and helps ensure continued social economic growth. And again, the province also believes that well-maintained infrastructure is the foundation of a strong economy. So now council has the opportunity, as they have in the past, to demonstrate their commitment in supporting infrastructure through their endorsement of the various capital plans, budgets, to ensure reliable quality infrastructure systems that meet the needs of the community that we all serve. So that concludes this portion of the presentation. At this point, I'll hand it back over to the City Treasurer, David Dexter.
Thank you, Paolo. I, my last group of slides here will be going through the funding, I think. Just one second. Okay, great. These slides here, I'm going to go through, kind of give a brief update on how we're going to fund the almost $38 million capital ask that Paolo presented. This slide in front of us right now gives a brief funding one-on-one of the sources that we use for, for funding the capital program. The majority of our capital program is existing assets. We call that non-growth as well. And the funding sources come from the tax-supported reserves, those are reserves that attain their contributions and their, and their balances from the operating budget, rate-supported. Those are reserves that we maintain that gain funding from rate-supported fees, such as the water wastewater rate or the stormwater rate. Federal gas tax provides a flexibility fund most non-growth projects. We obtain about $60 million, $6 million a year from the federal government for that. And we, and of course, proceeds from high-door reserve funds through the many pockets of those reserves. When there's a growth portion of the capital program, we use development charges, the monies received from the development community, cash from the parkland also received from the development community through the Planning Act provisions. And again, federal gas tax can also provide funding sources to the growth side because it's flexible enough to do that. This slide just provides a pie chart indicating the percentage breakout of funding of the total capital program. As I mentioned, about 80% of it is, is a non-growth capital program, and it's shown by, reflected by reserve funding sources of the tax-supported at around 41%, the largest portion. Rate-supported at the second biggest portion, 26%, and gas tax is the third largest portion at 14%. It's important that we have a capital program that maintains a good repair of assets. We have a capped capital program, but still there are pressures in the number of reserve fund areas. I'm briefly going to go through each of the points, each of the areas I've identified in this slide, slide for each. The tax-supported program, as I mentioned in the pie chart, these fund about 41% of the capital budget and pose most significant financial sustainability challenge for Richmond-Hill and other municipalities. This was something that we've, we've gone through. We've had capital sustainability committee meetings to review assets that eventually led to a financial sustainability strategy that was presented last Budget Committee, the whole meeting, to be in place for the 2022, 2022 capital budget program, capital budget program. So in the meantime, we, council passed motion to cap the tax-supported program at $15 million as we go forward to complete the comprehensive asset management plan that Paolo mentioned briefly. To get to $15 million, staff had to go through a risk assessment approach, and Paolo also described that, and it was a continuation of the approach that we used in 2020, so there was some efficiencies gained from doing that. And as Paolo mentioned, we did meet the guideline there. As I mentioned, October 6th at the BCW meeting, we, committee and then council afterwards, adopted the city's financial sustainability strategy to commence start in 2022. That strategy broadens the funding horizon and the approaches that we go about dealing with the ongoing state of good, good repair of capital to include debt eventually. Next slide. Second largest funding source of about 26% is the water wastewater reserve funds. There's two large projects here that are contributing to it. Water main repair and replacement at Major Mackenzie Drive, Bathurst and Young, and a continuation of, of digitization and remote reads of our metering system, the radio frequency metering system that is in, in over 90, 99% of the homes in Richmond-Hill. Next slide. The other rate-supported reserve fund is the Stormwater Quality Protection Reserve Fund, and this, this reserve funds the stormwater management-related infrastructure in, in the city. We have a fee, a flat fee that we charge residents and businesses currently, but it's not a sufficient level to, for long-term sustainability of this asset program. We presented that information through a report and presentation during last year's operating budget process. Council approved moving to a new rate structure that's more equitable and provides more sustainability for the infrastructure through a longer term. We plan to have that in place for 2022. Now, a number of, not a large number of projects this year are using this reserve, so the reserve pretty much status quo. As I mentioned, gas tax is in there, and it's the third largest funding source of 14%. We receive about $6 million per year. They index that annually. And we, this year, we're allocating it towards facility, some mechanical system replacements, and to help fund some of the road reconstruction projects. We try to use these monies that we get from the federal government to help us with our tax-supported reserve fund concerns, and so we try to gear towards those type of projects. And then the fourth largest funding source is, is on the growth side, development charges. We attain development charges through the growth program where development goes on in the city. We have a couple of major projects in this capital budget. EA works for the road network and a comprehensive zoning bylaw update as well, including using DC funds there. Next slide. So this capital budget process, it was capped on the tax-supported side, but it did provide some positive results. We, we continued to use efficiencies of staff's time as we continued to use the risk assessment approach and the asset management decision-making. We, of course, extended the life of the reserves by capping the tax-supported. And as we, as we go through the implementation stages and ramp up of the enterprise asset management system that council approved next year, we sound some efficiencies from starting to get some information from it. Those efficiencies we further gained as we get further along to implementation to benefit future capital budgets. So recommendations to the report committee is, is to approve the capital budget at almost $38 million. So recommendations to the report committee is is to approve the capital budget that almost thirty eight million dollars. Prove the recommended funding sources are provided in appendix D. Pro the fourteen projects identified in appendix B for contingent on getting grant funding be approved. And then of course a draw a capital budget by law that's attached that would go to the November twenty fifth council meeting. So Mr. Chair, that's the end of Paulo on my presentation, we turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you, Mr. Masaro. I just want to highlight to committee, of course, the recommendation to go out with these capital expenditures is. Because we want to do so as soon as possible to get a competitive advantage over other municipalities in the tendering process. That's something that we've done each of the three years so far this term. That's why that recommendation is there and I want to thank our. Our finance staff that have managed to to. To without 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 causing any any risk situations, deal with the fifteen million dollar cap that this. This committee and council has imposed, it's been very restrictive. It was brought about as a result of of recognizing that we were on a trajectory to not be able to meet our. Our long term repair and replacement needs and. The fact that there were a number of projects that that we had to take a closer look to see if if in fact we are going to go forward. With some major capital spending, so that long term. For process and evaluation is coming to a to a close in twenty twenty two. Our next budget will be a normal budget cycle when it comes to capital dealing with capital assets after our sustainability strategy is in place. So members of committee, any comments or questions on the presentations? Counselor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you staff for their presentation. It stood in helpful particular with the first part of the presentation that shows. How do we get to what we're looking at here? So I appreciate that very much, Paulo and all your staff. The the question I have for you, Mr. Chair, is that we're seeing a listing of about, if I count it right. Eleven projects that has been delayed or referred, whatever its way term is. Anyway, it's not going to happen in the capital. Projects in the year twenty twenty one. And I wonder that through you, Mr. Chair, is the question is. All these the projects that being refer or delay or it's just a sample that share with us. This directly to Paulo about the the slide that shows the eleven projects, is that powder sample or just all of it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. For Chan, this is a sampling. In some cases, there are some smaller value projects for the purpose of the presentation. We want to focus on the ones that have a higher value, so you. The magnitude of.
Thank you for that. Sorry, I I I'm sure it's not easy, but I I take comfort that is one chart that shows the process. By which weights have been assigned it, so so it's more than eleven projects, thank you for that. And I'm thankful in the sense that. Particular growth oriented, there's one point two five million is still going to be dedicated to the Richmond Hill Center. Study, so I I think that's a good sign. And because we are talking about that, we need to really continue to stimulate growth. And so anything that relating to growth, I would say not to be delayed, so I'm happy to see that. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for me to seek those clarification. From my end, I I happen to see that within the eleven projects, three of eleven so happened in one six. And out of the five particular specific locations, three are in one six, so I just have to be. Feel comfortable knowing that this is a a range of process to make the decision, a hard decision we are, and those are not eleven. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to seek the clarification from the executive director and I appreciate it. And if you need to, I will happy to move the motion for recommendation, Mr. Chan.
Okay, so thank you. So you're moving all the most, all the recommendations, all the staff recommendations and item four point one. Thank you, Counselor Chan. Any other speakers, any questions or comments? You can only, I can only see seven of you. Okay, so.
Mister Mister Chair, I'm here, I'm just having video issues. I I don't have any questions, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Barrows. Okay, we've got a motion for the staff recommendations and item four point one, all in favor. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Very good. So we move forward. One second. Here, four point two is a tariff of fees update in a presentation by our treasurer, David Dexter. Go ahead.
Mister Chair, if I may may inquire that we want to bring forward item number three on the Muirhead Crescent report. It has a relation to capital budget, just to close the capital budget business.
Oh, I thought it was moved with the first one.
What? Well, it was, we we moved the capital projects. But this this is the recommendation is to not go forward, I believe, with this one. Anyways, I am okay with to go and go into four point three next and is any any members of committee object to. To doing four point three now instead of four point two? Okay, I don't see any objections, so so go ahead. We will, we will now go to item four point three on the agenda. The Muirhead Crescent and Stovall Road Water Main and sanitary sewer servicing. Go ahead, Mr. Treasurer.
You, Mister Chair, there's no presentation, but I guess Paulo is here, the author of the report, who could answer questions or describe if you you would like.
Okay, thank you, so what else?
Mister Chair, if you would please, it's the the chair, I'd be happy to move it forward. I think the report is self explanatory and in the presentation, the executive director explained very aptly. Different projects that are going and not going and the rationale, so I just think that I'd be happy to move it if we have someone to second it. Take the vote and then move to that presenting.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Barrows. We don't require a seconder, so we've got a motion on the floor and and yes, like you said, it's. It's it's self explanatory, it's a those those residents need to be reengaged in light of factors that have changed since they were originally. Wanting this and and they need to be aware of the full cost to the homeowners for this project, so. I'm also in favor of. Of proceeding as recommended by our staff. Anyone else have questions or comments on this? Counselor West?
Thank you, Mister Chair. It was a fairly comprehensive and self explanatory and report, I agree. Can you just clarify for me, part of the, one of the recommendations? I guess it is C is that I gather from that recommendation that we will go. Out to the individual homeowners in that area and ask them again. To reconfirm their support for this local improvement going ahead. So I presume that's like another survey to gauge their support, is that correct?
Director Masaro?
Through the chair to Counselor West, that is correct, that is the intent.
Okay, and when when do you expect us to get a result back? I guess it's recommendation D. Is the staff report back to update council on the outcome of validating the community support for the local improvement? What kind of timeline are we talking about there?
Through the chair to Counselor West, we haven't actually set a timeline yet. However, we would like to make it as imminent as possible, so whether it started at the end of this year with results to report back in the new year. But preferably we'd be reporting back as early as Q one in twenty twenty one. Which allows us enough time to engage and get enough feedback from the community as a whole.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's that's it for me.
Okay, and anyone else have questions? Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Barrows. The four recommendations in, oh, sorry. Or four recommendations in item four point three, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Very good, now we will go back to item four point two and a tariff of fees update from Treasurer Dexter.
I guess while the slide gets up there, I just want to say a thank you to the finance staff that worked pretty hard on this, not only this report. But also the capital budget report under the leadership of the manager of the area, Gigi Lee, so I think shout out to thank you to them. This so we're updating this this report and the presentation reflects the annual update of the city's tariff of fees. It's a it's a bylaw that contains all our, the majority of our user fees, which funds over twenty percent of our operating budget. As I mentioned, it's an annual part of the budget process. It's the first stage of the operating budget process. It incorporates new fees and increases existing fees and determines additional revenue impacts to assist with the operating budget direction of the council. And of course, it tries to balance the impact on the overall economic climate, especially so going into the twenty twenty one fee update where. Evaluating the outside climate is is has been quite important in this COVID situations. Excellent. The basis and the principles that we have for updating this are the first three are standard ones where the. Fees need to be justifiable and provide a reasonable amount of cost recovery for the efforts to provide the services. We try to be comparable and competitive with other municipalities in the in the region. Are close to the region. We want it to be affordable and of course competitive, so it's a fine balance, but for twenty twenty one fees. Considering the hardships that could have impacted some households are sensitive to which fees we increase. And we especially on the recreation side, we tried to pause and any increases that would go on for such fees to individuals and businesses. Next slide. So we categorize our fees in four ways. We have legislative fees and those are enacted by acts of government, government bodies, planning act fees. Municipal act fees, those are typical fees out fit in that category. We have regulatory type fees and that's where the city establishes by law that our council approved. And then enforced and that would be our by law enforcement area, a number of those fees there. Cost recovery fees, those are ones that we try to recoup the costs that we that we. That it costs the city to provide the fees and a lot of them happen in the engineering inspection area, the businesses are good examples. And then we have community fees and these are generally non mandatory or discretionary in nature. The recreation fees take make up this category and these community fees are the majority of the tariff of fees by law. Next slide. So some highlights here in summary, anticipated back back if I commit. Okay, so anticipated, at time writing the report, the anticipated CPI for twenty twenty one was about one point one percent. And we sent out internal direction to staff, where possible, increase their fees by CPI, at least CPI. Except recreation, we've talked briefly about that, we wanted to keep those fees on on the most case status quo to. Be sensitive to residents and the challenges of of participation levels, right, and the impacts that may have on town on city revenues. We were thirteen hundred fifty eight total fees, we add thirteen to that to get to thirteen fifty eight. About three hundred and forty four of them have increased by CPI or more. Thousand of fees have remained unchanged, so about that's over seventy percent of fees have remained unchanged. The increase in the fees that we did increase, the new ones we anticipate to garner about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional budget revenues. Majority of that's in the operating budget. Just as a highlight included in that is the annualization of the Lake Wilcox parking temporary parking fees. Which are being there for April to September and that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth there. Next slide. This is a tabular presentation of what I described on the previous slide. As you can see, the from the total total fees, the community fees make up a large majority, over seventy percent of the of all the fees. And of course, those on the most part remain unchanged, so it's just a tabular presentation of what I described to you in the previous slide. Just a bit of a closer focus on the recreation and culture fees. As you can see here, the one number fees in the middle column now changed about eight hundred and eighty one. We had some small increases to fees, but those fee increases were largely focused on non residents or commercial fee categories. Based on benchmarking with neighboring municipalities. Others, the rest of them have been capped pretty much, and there was a few new fees, and I'll briefly describe them in a slide to come. As we've talked a lot about here, we've been quite sensitive to the recreation and culture fees and we didn't increase the majority of them. There was a change in minimum wage. That came about in in October this year, but we didn't change the fees at all. We didn't change the fees or any other additional operating costs that we may be incurring to provide programs. So we're looking for as a recommendation to support the be allowed to nominally increase these fees in the year. If we decide this is the right thing to do and the right opportunity to do that throughout the year. So that's recommendation to the report. Next slide. Also, different to this report, the typical years is we want to introduce a convenience fee which we would like to charge. As you know, considering physical distancing. Residents and businesses don't come to our facilities, we are trying to do more digitization and online business. That means more registrations through payment or payments through credit cards. By taking credit card payments. We incur credit card charges at the city and we don't, we need to balance our budgetary challenges as well. So we are suggesting a convenience fee is charged to those who charge, who pay through credit card through many of our online features, our systems. Of two point five percent, which is consistent with how Visa and Mastercard rates are. And so that's a recommendation to the report. Next slide. As I mentioned, we have some new charges and fees. In the community services area, there's on the bylaw side and a noise by law exemption permit. We're starting to do some virtual programs in concerning the times with respect to the summer camp and with the virtual theater program. Richmond Green Fencing is a is a new fee. And in the planning regulatory service area of two minor official plan amendments and minor zoning by law amendment fees that are new to twenty twenty one by law. Um, we talked a lot about recreation and culture and we need to really realize that the discussion can keep going on about our facilities and our programs as we're learning more. We're going through more stages of COVID nineteen. It costs, our varying facilities cost a varying amount, different amount to operate, some more pricier than others. We need to do a bit of a cost benefit assessment of each facility to figure if it's it's benefit to, it's a benefit to open them at certain times or not. So where our staff are going to start our, as we prepare for the operating budget and the budget discussions that we will be having in January with this committee. Recommending when or if we'll be opening facilities at certain times in the year, so this is, we're going to be doing that. Throughout the process and we'll be having a more holistic discussion on that with the budget committee, the whole in January, but staff is working on these analysis right now. Next slide. And so the recommendation to the board is to adopt the updated tariff fee by law. We mentioned about the increasing the recreation fees nominally by for minimum wage or operational cost increases if. Staff believe it's the right thing to do in the year and of course I talked about the convenience fee of two point five to approve that for online payments. And I turn it back to you, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I. I was confused for a minute there, you kept referencing new fees and I was like, no, new new fees, okay. So very good, thanks for the presentation. Do you have any speakers or questions about the Mayor Barrow? Go ahead. Counselor West, I've got you. Mayor Barrow, your speaker's not, your mic's not on.
I was just practicing my speech here. I just want to say now you can hear me. That I I will move the tariff of fees update and I and I. It's always been an issue, or not an issue, but a tough area to to get in involved in and because there's lots of. Programs that are there and the costs of those programs, but I think as Mister Dexter just said. As we get into the end of this year and beginning of next year. as we get into the end of this year and beginning of next year, is how many of those programs and program will be actually in place? You know, based on the COVID-19 is we keep going on and on and on. So I I agree with that and there's opportunities, we'll take them to to create more items for our community to be involved in. But at this point in time, we can't do that. We can't do that at all. I think it's a good way of dealing with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Barrow. Counselor West?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation as always, Mr. Dexter and the rest of your your team. This is a very complex and and fulsome document and I I hesitate to want to get into the weeds on all of these. And I have, I mean, I will admit, I don't haven't read all thousand fees and so on and carefully analyze them. But the one fee that has I've had input from residents about is the the fee that we charge for green bin and blue bin replacements when they get damaged. And I mentioned this earlier in another meeting coming up that I would be bringing this up at the appropriate time. And I believe this is the appropriate time, given that it's the tariff of fees that is in front of us. The concern that I have is that we did not used to charge people when they came into the operations center or wherever to exchange a broken blue bin or a broken green bin. And broken meaning almost for certain that they broken because, you know, they were dropped or they run over by a car or something. You know, they were damaged in their in their the line of duty, so to speak, for that product. The problem that I run into when I have residents call me about this is that it's never, you know, it's it's the it's never the fault of the resident who owns the blue bin. It's always something that happened in the op, you know, in the operation of using that bin. And that concerns me. The the fee to replace those bins is not huge, and I do understand that it's even subsidized to some degree by the municipality. But I find it, I find people very offended that they would have to pay for something that they didn't break. And I have to say I sympathize with them to a large degree when that happens. Clearly, they need the green bin and the blue bin in order to participate in the recycling and the organics composting program. So I don't think it's very fair for us to be charging them. I mean, they do have to go to the trouble to to go and get it replaced. So I would like Mr. Chair to put forward an amendment that we remove the replacement cost for replacing green and blue bins. And I'm not talking for new bins or for lost bins or anything like that. It's only the ones that are broken and that they can present to the operations center as a bin that's in need of replacement because it's broken and not usable. So that would be my amendment, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to hearing from others on council.
Okay, so so we have an amendment to the staff recommended motion. We're going to see that on the screen now. Now, Counselor Barrows, you want to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I apologize for having a video. I guess my concern with this amendment is it is an increase in property taxes. And at this point in time, I can't support increasing property taxes to subsidize the replacement of blue bins. Perhaps what we could do is we could look through the contract that we have with our waste provider to see if there's any wording in there when it comes to broken bins on the contractor's side. Other than that, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to the? Anyone else? Counselor Silvitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say I I support this. I've had similar, I've had similar concerns from residents and they do get very upset that they have to pay for something to be replaced that they did not damage. So I do support this. I I think it's, I think it's prudent. Thank you, Counselor West. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Counselor Munch?
Good day. I too have received complaints and I'm understanding of the concern. I've picked up some bins and purchased some bins myself for residents and assisted where possible. I think we already are subsidizing these bins and the reality is that no one likes to pay fees. I certainly don't. So I say I think I'm consistent with many of the other and some of the complaints. So I think the fact that we do subsidize the bins, the fact that we are in a you know, last budget season, we're in austerity, we have to worry about a increasing of tax of capital sustainability. And I think to subsidize one part of our needs and similar to people who rent space and do volunteer groups, they also do a tremendous amount of good in our society. So we have to balance all the needs of our community. And I say that the staff saying, hey, you know, the amount of subsidy we're providing there was too excessive and they asked us to come back and we at council agreed to that during the budget process. We understood that the ramifications of that and obviously none of us want to pay when we have that. And it is true, sometimes things break through no fault of somebody else, but that is the way things are. We can't continue to subsidize. The money comes from somewhere. The cost is there. And we have to share that cost together. And what I'd say is everybody has to show proper care. And I agree with the board and Counselor Greg Barrows where he said that maybe we should have some form of engagement with our supplier to find out ways. Or two, do we consider going to a model like Toronto did, for example, where they have a much more durable bin? Where they have a different pickup system that has a much longer lifespan? Maybe that's the key. But I think frankly, the the $15 that it costs the people to use that bin that subsidized from it, we're already doing our part to show some care and compassion. But to say that we're going to subsidize it entirely is is not a total balance. We've given all the other high costs of tariffs and fees. We just recently put a parking bylaw in place. And if you looked at our revenue that we're looking to generate from that is pretty high, given to where we were. So I'm going to say to you, we have to find the balance between saying to a senior on a fixed income because that we need to help them subsidize. What about when somebody comes forward and says, hey, look, I live in a high rise, for example, and we don't get those services at all and we have maintenance fees. Are we going to give them a subsidy for not paying? For their paying, they're subsidizing the rest of the municipality for services they don't even receive. So I think everybody has to has to solve some balance and we have to have a looking at our our financial position. And the fact that we are not saying we're not subsidizing anything, all we're saying is we're reducing the subsidy relative speaking. And I would hate to see the fees or taxes for the rest of the whole go up at this. I'm accepting staff's recommendation and the direction that we took budget. And I think we have to move in this direction because the reality is that more costs are coming forward. We need, we need to manage our our finances accordingly. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Munch. Counselor Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I for one also have received quite a number of residents complaints when they found out it's a price when they go to change, oh, now we have to pay. So I understand where the move is coming from. But I also understand the previous to a couple of speakers talking about, you know, this is something that we cannot continuously do subsidy. And when, you know, it's we're trying to balance the budget in here. I'm wondering whether the person moving, or Counselor West in this case, moving amendment would consider we provide a cap, meaning that if it's the first time that perhaps it could be waived. However, the amendment, if I read correctly, with almost like continuously, like obviously, we don't want that to happen. You know, somebody would have to go in to change every quarter, every year. But surprise, surprise, I have seen in a neighborhood that people are actually putting bandages around the 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 blue boxes as if they are trying to, you know, like preserve it or make it to last longer. So I'm not suggesting we do put bandage around our blue boxes, but I've seen people doing it. So I support the amendment in principle, but I think to make it like indefinitely, given the current fiscal situation and also, I don't know if staff would have the information now, but eventually the collection of at least the recyclables, meaning the blue box is actually going to take off from municipal hands. So that is a longer term thing, unquote, maybe uncertainties we are tangling with. So within the certainty we have that I wonder whether the I guess this opportunity, the mover or the amendment would consider that would be a one time, maybe waive of the fee of the first time. But going indefinitely, it may be a little bit of a challenge. So I'm just, thank you, Mr. Chair, for me to raise that. And perhaps Counselor West might want to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll go to Counselor Liu and continue on the first round. Counselor Liu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do also receive lots of complaints about, you know, the resident has to pay for the the recycled bins. And I totally agree with Counselor West that, you know, why, why should we pay for something that we didn't break? So within that principle, I have a question. I don't know why the supplier or the the contractor is not covering that cost or is not subsidizing. It has to be the city that subsidized that cost. I have two broken bins myself, you know, I can, you know, speak for myself. It's 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 not my fault. It's their fault. So is how they handle the bins every single time on garbage day. So why are we suffering but not, you know, not from the the contractor? So I I just curious.
Okay, I noticed.
I don't know if staff has a has a has an answer today.
Commissioner Jocelyn has popped on. She maybe she has can speak to our project with this.
Good afternoon, Council. So there are many reasons why the the blue box or the green bins are damaged and it's not all contractor fault. It's age of equipment. It's all sorts of other reasons. But Director Taylor is on the line. So I would ask if Grant can speak to this. It was the operations center that put this fee in the tariff of fee by law in 2019, but they did not act on it until recently. So so Grant can share some background with you and why that fee was imposed.
Well, hello, everybody and and through the chair. So we did, over the years, started to review our costs for the replacement bins. And I can tell you that in 2019, we spent about $90,000 on new bins and we recovered about half the cost, about $50,000 of those costs. So on average, it's costing the municipality about, you know, 30, 30 to $40,000 a year for these replacement bins. What most people don't realize is there is a life cycle. There the the bins are ideally supposed to last for about five years and then they should be replaced. I can tell you that every time we've reached out to our contractor where there's been a complaint of a damaged bin, they've been very responsive and and in most cases have reached out to the homeowner directly to inquire and in many cases re replace the bin. So I've been very pleased with their response so far. So really what this is all about is trying to recover our costs. We actually are only charging half the cost of what we're charging for a new bin for a replacement bin, which I think is is reasonable.
Well, thank you for the answer. So, okay, I um, I kind of understand, but I still, you know, I I still don't buy it. So I think same as my residents. So I listen to all the colleagues and and I'll make my decision. Thank you.
Okay. I guess before I go back to Counselor West to to wrap up with his amendment, I'll just say that I I also am of the opinion that there's a cost to this that it should not be spread across all our other residents, especially with so so many well, condo dwellers and residents that don't get the service. Who should bear the cost? Apparently, it's only half the half the cost on a replacement. So who should bear the cost? I I feel it's the resident. I think I think all of our residents have to have to purchase new bins as 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 they get worn out. That we we can't we can't push push that cost on to on to everyone, but he generally so that's that's where I'm feeling and and I'm glad to hear the contractors responsive in the case, but we've we've got to get them to stop breaking bins. We have to do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen. So. Oh, okay. Is that Counselor Pirelli?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When the opportunity arises, let me know if I can speak.
I I'm done. So you can speak and then Counselor West can wrap up on the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you. Yes, I tend to agree with yourself. You know, I'm one of the lucky ones. I got cameras around my house and I see how the the garbage people, you know, treat our bins. They're pretty respectful, generally speaking. There are a lot of cameras nowadays in residents' homes. And I think that if somebody was being especially, you know, violent with the bins, that that would be captured. It is my belief, Mr. Chairman, that the bins, you're right, they they wear as time goes on. I mean, it's part of the wear and tear. And I suspect that if we do change the policy to reflect that, you know, we're going to cover the cost of replacing those bins, I suspect the numbers will probably double or triple. If we're going to make an assumption that, you know, the people who don't own the bins and that's the the waste company drivers are not being respectful with them. I guess we'd have to make the same assumption with the residents who are not going to be paying for replacement bins. As well, Mr. Chairman, it is a well known fact that people use the blue boxes and the green bins for other things other than just, you know, they use it for carting stone and rocks and so on and so forth. I know I've done it before and I've seen my neighbors do it. And that adds wear and tear to the bins as well. So I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's one of those things that I think to keep the cost down, we have to make the residents responsible for the care of those. And if in the case that they do see some egregious behavior by the waste management company that personally I haven't seen, then then we can, you know, deal with that on a case per case basis. But until such time, Mr. Chairman, I think we should leave it status quo. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor West, your amendment.
Thank you for everybody for the discussion. I guess the the just to start off with the comment that Counselor Chan had made, I I I think the answer Counselor is that there still is an inconvenience for residents to have to come to get it changed. And I think that that would, I mean, nobody's going to come to to change the blue bin unless it gets to the point where they have to. And and to Counselor Liu's point of view with the Band-Aids around it, I I I agree. I see in the community on garbage day, there are there are blue bins out there with Band-Aids on them for sure. And I think, you know, the inconvenience of going to get a new one prevents people from wanting to do it. But I guess the main point here is that I agree 100% with Commissioner or for Director Taylor that there is a life cycle to these bins. I mean, they get hot and cold, hot and cold, hot and cold. And then they're plastic, they break, they get brittle. But the point is that we're not actually stopping people from having to pay for the bin. What we're stopping people or we're just we're delaying it. They're either going to pay for a replacement bin or we're collectively putting this on on, you know, the as an expense that we have as a city. And everybody is kind of, you know, paying a little bit until they actually need a new one, but they will need a new one. It's just a matter of time within five or six or seven or whatever number of years, they will need a new one. So I I appreciate the consideration of council. I I still believe that although it is a fairly significant expense where people are going to have to pay it regardless, either in our taxes or in our in the replacement of the bin or both. And I just think it's more fair to do it the way that I'm proposing. There is no choice to, you know, you have to have this infrastructure in order to participate in the programs that we're asking residents to participate in. Unlike a lot of the things in the tariff and fees by law, there in in many of those fees, not all, but many of them, there's a choice to either pay it or don't pay it. So anyway, that's my, those are my comments. I appreciate the discussion and I I look forward to the vote. So thank you. to either pay it or don't pay it. So anyway, that's my, those are my comments. I appreciate the discussion and uh I I look forward to the vote. So thank you.
Okay, thank thank you, Counselor. So so we have an amendment on the floor. Uh can the clerk put the amendment on the screen so we can vote? Okay, so we're voting on the amendment from Counselor West. Uh I don't see any other discussion. So all those in favor of the proposed amendment? And now I can't see hands. So.
No.
No.
And all all those opposed, raise your hands.
Pirelli opposed.
Arrow's opposed.
Okay.
Sure to follow. Uh you you muted yourself.
So can you get the main motion on the screen then, Mr. Clerk? Okay, three.
Mr. Chairman, what was the vote?
There were five that voted opposed and.
Okay, thank you. You were just muted. Thank you.
Okay, yes, it was it was the motion failed, the amendment failed. So we're back to the main motion moot by Mayor Barrow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Counselor Barrows? Okay, so that care.
Yeah, sure to follow you. You did yourself again.
Holding the bar. That completes our scheduled business, I believe. So that that motion uh passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, first, uh thank you, Deputy Mayor Pirelli. I'll take your motion. I just want to thank our staff and all the good work they're doing and I wanna wish them all the best with as they move forward with these capital projects. And great, great work, committee. So I've got a motion from Deputy Mayor Pirelli to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you council tomorrow.
Great job, Mr. Chairman.